Have here this evening, Select Board Member Sharon Russell. I'm Mary Ashcroft, Select Board Chair. We have Bill Sweet, who is our Town Administrative Assistant to the Select Board. We have Howard Burgess, and we have Dick Bailey, member of the public. And Don Chaffee is coming in. Hey, Don. Hi, Marcia. So we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. We're starting.
Okay.
All right.
Flegeligence.
The United States of America, to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited in justice for all.
Okay, thank you all. We're, this is the second of two listening sessions being held by the town of Rutland to discuss what we should be doing and getting as many ideas as possible, what we should be doing with the town share of the ARPA funds coming from the federal government. Select Board Member Don Chaffee is joining us. So we're hoping for a lot of good creative ideas, and we've got several people who would like to participate, so let's jump in. Lydia, I think you said you had some time limitation. Do you have something you'd like to add before? Should I start with you then?
You said Lydia? No, Lydia's just here to listen.
Okay, all right. Well, you're welcome. Good to hear from you. Since he is here live and in person, and he's already taken the microphone, sorry, Kirsten. We're going to start first with Dick Bailey. So what do you have for us?
Yeah, thank you. I'm just more or less concerned, or not concerned, but interested in just what funds are available. Now, how much are we talking about?
Okay.
And there's, I mean, certainly there's some things that the funds probably wouldn't even come close to making a scratch in for some of the issues we have. But obviously, there's some things that might be very well addressed by them. So that's what I'd like to know.
Okay. Well, I'll start with a little background. As far as I know, Don, I think, has gone through some of the League of Cities and Towns training as well. We have coming to us as our share $430,000. It's coming in two equal installments. One is supposed to be like momentarily dropping into the account we've set up. And the other will be paid within a year. Okay, so that's what we know. There are restrictions on what we can use it for. This is for COVID relief recovery. So obvious things would be, you know, health, health things related to COVID recovery. Programs that would assist people who have lost their jobs because of COVID. So it could be loan or grant programs for, you know, certain individuals or businesses or nonprofits in town. It can be used for certain kinds of infrastructure. We were actually looking at that a little bit because I think we can use it on some stormwater mitigation. We can't use it to pave roads, you know, we know that. We can use it for water sewer projects to some extent. Trying to think of other things. There's, there was a whole list of things. If you're really, if you're interested in getting into some details. The League of Cities and Towns has quite a bit of information, and they also have a link to the federal interim rules. I don't know if they're past the interim stage yet, but, but they're 35 pages long, so. No, leave it for light reading. You might remember somewhere too.
I don't, I don't remember them any more than you do, Mary, but maybe I, as I said before at our last meeting. And, and I wish that you would approach it this way, and anyone else who's listening would approach it this way. The federal government is prone to be much more lenient as opposed to strict in the interpretation of the use of these funds. That doesn't mean that you can use them for obvious things that are not COVID-related somehow or other, or recovery. Recovery is a very broad and general word, and a broad and general term, and can be applied in many different ways to activities that either didn't take place in town and should have therefore be eligible for replacement funds. Or things that could be construed as recovery because of loss of jobs, loss of enterprise, loss of business, closing of businesses. So I think in general that we should look at this as covering a lot more things than not. And my, my admonition and my advice to anyone, including our own board, is to be as liberal as possible with the application of these funds. We can always be told no. But if you don't ask, you don't get. And that's my, that's my attitude.
Be creative. Yeah, well, I like the word liberal, Don. Good to hear it coming from your lips.
Yeah, I wouldn't have said that.
I have always been a social liberal.
So be creative.
Conservative, and this is not our money, but actually it is our money, but it's going to be spent on us. We've already been allocated the money. So I would say we wouldn't throw it away, but that we would throw it to something that will benefit the town.
That reminds me, because we do have time to think about this. The funds have to be allocated for use by December 31st of 2024. So we've got time. Yeah.
I guess so.
Way better than the first round, the funding that came through. And then we have two more years after that to actually finish spending the money once it's allocated. So we're in, we're in good shape.
Mary, I have a question for you. Before we go further, these funds, the 434, are separate from the county funds, are they not?
Yes, yeah. The county funds, we, well, we don't know what it's going to, we have a rough idea of what it's going to be, which could be another $750,000 to $800,000.
For the whole county?
No, our share. But, but the question is the interpretation of what happens when states, there are a few that don't have county governments, and we only, only have municipalities. So Congress really hasn't dealt with that yet. So it could be it goes to the county government that structure that we do have. But it could also just pass through to the towns. But I think at one point I calculated somewhere, we could be getting 1.2 or 3 million altogether. Including the, yeah, our share of the county funds. But we don't know that, we can't count on the county thing yet. But we could very well be getting additional.
Oh, okay. So what you're saying is that 700 would be our, our portion of it, if it goes that way. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So Howard.
On the, on the county thing, that's what I was going to mention.
Okay.
The director of that I was talking to from, it's a, it's a sewer water group up north.
Okay.
Anyways, and she told me, she said, there's a good chance that from the county, you get another 400,000, she said, she seemed to. She said, she mentioned the fact that counties were treated differently.
Yeah.
Than the rest of the states and whatnot.
Yeah.
But that's what she, she mentioned.
Okay. And then there's the other infrastructure projects appropriations that Congress is dealing with right now. And that, we're not even counting any of that. That could very well have something to do with what we're doing. So you've got the microphone, but Kirsten's ready to share her ideas too.
Can you hear me?
Hi.
Yeah.
Hi. Um, so a couple of thoughts that I had, and I know I'm not as in the know about ARPA funds as I am with some of the other funding in the state. But first, I thought about the Randberry Road project. I wasn't sure how viable.
I'm sorry, the what? Say that again.
The Randberry Road project.
Okay.
The water and sewer. That was my first thought. I wasn't sure if they were eligible for that. And then my other thought was with all of the empty storefronts that are all over town, possibly either doing something, some kind of a incentive or a loan program for businesses that want to move into the town.
Yes.
Yes. We, we have heard that from a couple of different directions. So thank you. What are your thoughts about, you know, incentives, low interest loans or grants or a combination? Who should they go to and for what purpose?
Well, I think that, that from what I've seen in downtown, there are a lot of younger first-time business owners that are trying to get things off the ground. I think that that might be maybe the priority for people. Somebody who is either a, already a resident or who is maybe a first-time business owner. You know, something along those lines, and then kind of maybe have a scale from there as to, you know, what you do for different businesses based on, I don't know, their, their ties to the community. I think it could also be helpful if those businesses maybe have something to do with the community as a whole. I know one of the groups that we work with currently is at-home senior care. There's a lot of mental health issues in the community right now because of COVID, because of, specifically with senior citizens, because of the, the seclusion that a lot of them have had because of COVID. So I don't know if that was, I mean, I guess that's kind of another idea at the same time. But I don't know, that's kind, kind of my thoughts on it.
Well, keep them coming. I mean, those are all good ideas. And I think mental health, in addition to physical health, is all part of what COVID relief can be used for. So, yeah. Okay, so.
That jumps out at me, what you're talking about, what you, when you were starting to outline things. I mean, the idea of a no-interest, low-interest loan for these businesses that have been suffering, trying to get back on their feet again, really appeals to me. And
Does me too.
And I think that would be a wonderful idea, and I'm not sure it would be implemented. But I mean, hundred thousand or a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of loans for some of these people would go a long way to keeping them back on track again.
Yeah, yeah. And I think.
Something like that, you might want to consider having some kind of a grants team. Maybe a couple of people who are willing to volunteer their time to be able to sit in on a committee to review different business plans and see what might be viable and what the best options would be for where the funds go.
Okay, are you volunteering?
I can, if you want me to. I've done it before, but.
I'd be in on that.
Get all the help we can get.
That's right. Good.
I did do that with the changemakers, so I'd be willing to do it.
Great, thank you.
If it were, if it were allowed, we might be able to do a revolving loan fund.
Well, here's the thing that I'm thinking about this, speaking creatively. If we did low-interest, no-interest loans, and then the repayment comes back to the town, we could set up a revolving fund. And maybe the money that goes out in the second round isn't tied by the COVID regulation restrictions. So I'm wondering, so we should look into that because, and then we would have this wonderful little pot of money that we could use to attract businesses in town, help, you know, small startups. Daycare is a need that I'm hearing quite a bit about. So, good.
Did you look at me with that, with daycare? Are you trying to tell me something, Mary? I don't need daycare.
Care for seniors and for children.
Yeah, right. All right, she's off the committee.
Yes, yes, in many ways, Don.
I will say that I received a, maybe it was in our packet or. Yeah, we did receive, Howard, a request to be considered for a grant or a loan from the fire district. Sorry, I will find it. Is it the old packet or the new? Here it is. Rutland Town Fire District number six. So this is from Jim Dick, and his request is they need to have a water system study that will address the major concern of obtaining a secondary water source because the number two well cannot be used. So they're asking for $10,000 of ARPA funds to the Rutland Town Fire District to fund the infrastructure study. So, and one of the sessions that, you were in on this one too, League of Cities and Towns, somebody asked, are the fire districts getting money? And the answer was no, but that, I think the, the answer was they're not getting it directly, but go through the town and ask. So that's a possibility.
Treasury Department has allowed that to.
Yep. So are you thinking that's a good idea? Your fire district?
I got something I want to present to you as well.
Okay, let's hear it then. No, this one is not Howard's, I know, I know. Because this is for Victorian Sunset Drives.
I'll guarantee you, his is a lot more than 10 grand.
Well, let's see. What do you have?
I wish I made more copies. I didn't realize.
Okay, thank you.
Our sewer plant. Down at our pump station that we have down here near the river. What we really need is, we need what's called a muffin monster grinder pump, which grinds up everything that comes through the sewer and just completely, totally grinds it up. We've got a mess down there with all kinds of stuff that, that comes out. And every day the operators go down there, and there's a grate that catches it all, and they have to rake it up and pull it up. And so there's a big pile of stuff all the time that they're pulling, of, of, of raw sewage and stuff that they're pulling out onto the ground. And this, this muffin monster grinder just grinds it all up. In, in addition to the stuff getting into our wet well, it's really damaging our, our impellers on our pumps down there. And every now and then we have to have A1 sewer drain come and pump it out and backflow and do different things because it's just, it's happening all over the state really bad. And the other, the other thing, the other item on here is the generator. We do not have a generator down there. We're sitting right on the banks of the river. And, and what I proposed here to you was some of, it was total of $87,000. And it's a for the, the muffin monster, that was going to be $65,000. It was a quote in there that Beldon prepared. We got the
Yeah, I saw that.
For the pump and everything. And then the generator is 22,000. And so that's, that's what I'm here for, the generator from Brookfield Service. They, they gave us a quote, just got that today. I've been rushing to get through this stuff. But those are projects that I understand are eligible because they're new projects. The, the muffin is a new project, the generator is a new project. We can't use these monies for maintenance or repairs on our system. Because they're, they're new projects, they were working. You know, we're not very far, very far from the pocket part down there. And there's a lot of, you know, right at the river, and there's an area around us that used to be used a lot by people that used to come down to put, you know, canoes and different things in the and, and that whole area could be cleaned up and made, and made much more precious and reusable for everybody.
Gee, Howard, you know, it's near and dear to my heart, the pocket part.
But anyways, that's, that's what I'm presenting because it's, I it's something that we were pushed to do to get this stuff to the towns and wherever it goes, it goes. But it just, you've got.
So you're looking for an outright grant as opposed to a low-interest, no-interest loan?
Yeah, ideally to cover, you know, cover this or part of these expenses or whatever. Yes. What we really need to do is just whatever, whatever. We'll take whatever we could get. Let's put it that way, whatever. Now, I'm speaking myself. We have a fire department, a fire district that would have to be involved to go along with this too, because I'm not speaking for the, you know, the whole board.
How many people are part of that district? Do you know?
You know, people-wise, it's, it's somewhere.
Well.
Well, we have like a hundred, we have like a hundred connections.
Okay, that's, that's what I was asking.
And we, and we also take on the whole, the Flori Heights area. There's another 25 connections over there.
So that's 125.
Outside of the fire district.
Okay.
25. And then we do, yeah, this, this building, the fire station, Dewey's Ball Field, this is general area right up to the Benjam Furniture.
Yep.
It's.
Yep.
How, how, time-wise, how critical was this? In other words, if you didn't, if we didn't have the availability of these funds, when would the, when would the absolute necessity for you to bond for this come about?
Yeah, all I can say is the sooner the better. When I, when I took a fellow down there from Beldon, and he walked over and he saw what was going on, he said, this isn't good.
No, it isn't good to have fluid going into.
I mean, it's something that, that the sooner the better. It's just a tough thing because, again, they, they rake your stuff off the grates. You kind of have to let it dry, so to speak, before you can put it in the containers. And then I think it's Hubbard that picks it up. But meanwhile, it's, it's a mess.
So what if you got this grant or a low-interest loan from the town? And then you decided to join with the West Rutland Sewer District? And would, would we get reimbursed? Or how, how would that work?
That I don't know. But I, but I'm hoping that we're going to have this vote with us in West Rutland before two terren, or at the latest in March, that we'll have a vote and we will know for sure.
Whether you're going to.
Whether we go or we don't. And that, and that could make a difference.
And that would make the difference.
If you went with West Rutland, would any of this be used? Would it, it would just be pulled out of there and sold? Because you wouldn't need it anymore because you've got West Rutland.
If you go to West Rutland, it's going to be West Rutland's headache.
Okay.
That's, that's the plan.
Okay.
But in the meantime, if there's, you know, if there's money's available at some point along the way, we sort of interested in looking to do whatever we can.
Okay. Like, is this a timeline? That's good. Good, thank you. Anything in the Lister's office that could, you know, conceivably be COVID recovery-related that you folks are looking at?
No, I, I can't, this.
Yeah.
Cool. We, we, we made it through the COVID, and because right now it's not, I, I just don't.
Okay. Well, if you think of anything, money is going to be around for a while.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
It'd be nice if you get that extra from the county.
I know. Wouldn't that be great?
Super.
Yeah.
That's what I was.
I, I might add, and you should, you should note it, Howard, what Mary said about the allocation versus the spending of this money. And that, that's critical in this particular case right here. Because, because we could do an allocation with the stipulation that it wouldn't be allocated until, until after that decision is made.
Or we could wait and see what the decision is, so as not to sway the vote.
Because it's not that far off.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
But you got it. Mary, you put that in your pile of stuff there.
Don just passed it on to Bill, right? Okay. He is passing it on to Bill.
I was in the process of doing that.
At this and the previous listening session, we've had, Bill is keeping notes. We've got minutes of the proceeding, and we will have a whole list of things. And people have been sending in comments. And, and please do. I mean, we've, we've had a lot, number of good creative things. So Dick Bailey, you've been sitting there and thinking. Now, what have you come up with?
Well, this, the more I think about this loan thing, the more sense it makes to me. Especially, you know, a low or no-interest loan for the business downtown. I know, you know, I have connections with some of these people down there, and they're hurting. And they, they're not sure if they're going to recover, actually, even though they're back in business, you know, they're.
If it's given to the town, can we?
They're under, they're underwater with their loans, and, you know, it's just not good.
We, we can, I mean, and we have to, I mean, there has to be a process to determine that they were hurt by COVID. So restaurants come to mind as.
Right.
They certainly, hardware stores, maybe not. I, I don't know.
I don't know.
So
Right.
We would have to have a process so we could document that, yeah, these people were hurt, and this was part of the recovery plan that we give them some of this money. So.
And also the, you know, daycare facilities.
Better tell me that, it's something I don't know.
But I think, I think that's a good point, though. I mean, daycare facilities are.
Oh, yeah, they took a hit.
They're hurting, yeah. They're really hurting. Yeah.
Speaking of, my, my other job just showed up, so I'm going to have to go. If you have any questions for me before I leave.
Nice to see you.
Yeah, well, keep the ideas coming. We appreciate you participating.
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
Thanks. And we'll keep your name on the list. It'll go in the minutes as a volunteer for the committee.
I'm willing to do it if you need me. So just let me know.
Okay, thank you.
By the way, how's school going?
Not yet. It starts in a month, but that'll be exciting. Bye.
Good luck. Bye, Kirsten. Lydia, I know you're just there to listen, but have you come up with any ideas?
Yes, um. I've been here four years, but it still feels like I'm relatively new. What's the public transportation story in the town? Is there opportunity there to do things to expand people's ability to move around?
You mean like the bus?
Ah, I don't, right, public transportation. Yes.
Okay. All right. I don't know, other than the bus.
And the bus is well-publicized and well-used?
Uh, like, I don't know.
They might.
No.
It's hard to tell because the windows are always black and.
Well, I, I will say I had emails today from Jim Hall, who's trying to get the bus lined up under contract to take the seniors over to a restaurant and a day in Woodstock. And maybe that could be something, I mean, it's, we have had a request to help out seniors by setting up a better meeting space downstairs, renovating our meeting room and where we vote. And that may be something the building committee will want to take a look at. But as for transportation, maybe we could fund some trips or some way enhance the ability of seniors to get around. Did you have anything in particular in mind? Are there transportation needs that you know of that aren't getting met?
Not that I know of, but I'm one of the independent souls. So but I'm just thinking of ways to bring people to Rutland Town as a place to live. And what are the things that would appeal both? And, and the old folks, I mean, we're, we're fine. I mean, we, we've been at this long, we'll do just fine. And there's plenty of us. But how do we get those younger taxpayers to come to town? What, what are the things that they look for? And how can we enhance what we have?
Lydia, you know, it's really interesting that you bring up this, this very point that you're bringing up right now. Because I had a conversation with a member of the Board of Alderman. And without, without busting out any unique ideas, let me explain that part of this money, whether it's county money or town money, or shared town money with city money, may very well be used and could be used to sponsor an event. And when I say an event, I mean an event that would draw hundreds of thousands of people to the Rutland region. I think this idea is going to be explored. And the point of it goes exactly to what you were just saying. That we can't talk about any kind of recovery generally for the region or specifically for the town unless we attract more people. And we know that between the Lakes Region and Killington, that's where the greatest marketing effort is being made to attract people into the region right now. But that's pretty static. And we're talking about bringing a lot more people in. And then once they're here for this event, whatever it is, then we would allow and encourage all of the participating stakeholders to make their pitch for businesses, for residential development, that, that this is a wonderful place to be. And now that you're here, wouldn't you like to stay here for a longer period of time, like maybe the rest of your life? But if you had a. But if you had a captive audience of that number of people because of an event, I'm talking like a concert or an individual performance of, of a name brand performer that you would bring in, that, that would attract lots of people. So I, I think this is something that'll be considered. And I, I would hope that we would think it would be a good idea. It's, it's pretty unique. And it's certainly not something tangible, like we're gonna buy a, one of these digesters for a, for a sewage plant or something like that. But it, but it definitely is the kind of recovery thing where if you're gonna recover, you want to bring people back into the region. Who, who may have, you know, may have been leaving for other reasons. I don't know what, but, but you're right, you know, uh, we should look for ways to expand responsibly.
I think I saw Dana Peterson. Okay. Dana? Okay, thanks.
You did see me. I was just saving some bandwidth and.
Okay. What do you have for ideas?
Well, I was coming to listen to see what other folks were proposing. Given my unique situation now, uh, as the leader of a, a career and technical center, I have an interesting perspective on how COVID has impacted uh, many different facets of our state and local businesses and, uh, education facilities. So I don't know that I have a very specific idea in mind, but I can throw out some of the things that I have been thinking about with respect to the ARPA funds, because, uh, we've got 1.5 billion if I'm not mistaken. And I may have that wrong, but um, I, I think that that's what is being allocated in various allotments. Uh, and certainly 400,000 is nothing to sneeze at. Uh, but I think that the focus, uh, should be on, uh, as, um, Don was alluding to, some economic development, uh, opportunities and particularly training, whether those, the training comes from, you know, municipalities or it comes from partners in either nonprofits or even, uh, schools and particularly, uh, Stafford, which is a very huge resource in the Rutland area. Um, and one of the things that you may not be a, aware of is that uh, money isn't flowing to career and technical education in the way that it's flowing to many other educational entities. And, uh, so that would be something I would recommend that you consider in terms of looking at how you might be able to partner with Stafford or other career centers. Uh, for, uh, use in economic development, whether it has to do with providing, uh, certificates or looking at, uh, gaps in the, uh, workforce and how, uh, that could be improved either through, um, you know, some type of, um, uh, recruitment, um, and infusion of, uh, resources to, uh, help uh, workers either change jobs as a result of being displaced through the pandemic, or, uh, whether it's in other, uh, areas that might be, uh, beneficial in terms of, uh, generating interest and enthusiasm and opportunity uh, for workers to get back into the workforce. From our end, it seems like we're hearing, uh, a lot of businesses, uh, desperately seeking employees. And perhaps, uh, a part of that could be to, as Don was saying, attract people from other regions of the country uh, to come and, uh, settle here and, um, doing something with, uh, promoting positive lifestyles. Who knows? Uh, other things that I have been thinking about, uh, that affect both education and, um, business development is broadband access. And, uh, I, I believe that there are uh, funds separate from ARPA that are going, uh, towards that. But there might be small businesses that uh, might need a little bit of a boost to be able to, uh, continue, uh, their work. And perhaps some of the monies could be eligible uh, through grants for people to stay in, um, the area and/or come and establish, uh, a presence because teleworking is going to become more of an option for those who are seeking, uh, to do, uh, various types of work. And I think it would be an opportunity to try, uh, to encourage partnerships, uh, to have viable workers who can telework, uh, come to Vermont, come to Rutland Town and, uh, set up, uh, a presence, uh, here. I think that the opportunities are, are great. Um, for that, uh, that's one of the things that our, uh, Addison County Workforce Alliance has been, um, contemplating how to reach people who want to be in transition and how to support them in, uh, setting up a teleworking presence, either for a larger company or for, uh, individuals that want to, uh, relocate to the area. So those are a couple of things that I have. I don't have specific, uh, recommendations for a budget for any of the uh, topics that I've identified, but those are thoughts from the top of my head. And I'm happy to entertain any uh, questions or responses to what you've heard me say.
Okay. Um, two things. I'm glad you mentioned broadband because when the S- um, Sweats were here last listening session, they mentioned broadband or someone did. And then Esther emailed me and said, but there's already, her son had told her there was already funds for it, but you just made the link between the other funds and maybe small grants, back to the grant program for funding of specific internet connections or some other connections for individuals or very small businesses. So I appreciate that. That's good.
And, and, uh, I, I believe I mentioned, uh, and I'll mention it again, um, not so much broadband, but, um, emergency notification services, for instance, uh, on the hiking trails.
Yes.
Northwood.
Yes.
And/or at the pocket park, uh, a visual, a visual scan of the falls and the river flow. If people are going to be using that to be launching kayaks or canoes or whatever, then they need to be able to, they could simply tune in to, to a, to a site. Uh, because we, they have, we, I know I use these live sites all the time for fishing over on the, on the Salmon River. And all you gotta do is click on and you can see immediately what's going on on the river.
Right.
Should be able to do that at the pocket park. And also have emergency notification services like nine one one or, or something to that effect where if people have any kind of a safe, safety or security problem along those trails or uh, at the pocket park or on the river someplace, that they could be able to notify someone that they need help. So that's a safety concern. But, but Dana, that, the, I, uh, your, your comments on the technology are not so much the technology, on the trades, on focusing on trades, which have been neglected. And we know they've been neglected in this society. I mean, um, so what can we do? Uh, you, you've, you've stated it. And I think one of the things that we could do is strongly encourage the reintroduction of, um, of home economics and shop classes in the school system. We got rid of a whole mess of nice equipment that taught kids how to use saws and hammers and tools and very functional things, uh, that, that can lead to a, uh, innumerable careers in, in the construction trades. And, uh, even though the, even though the, the trade school, the technical school, uh, at Rutland continues that education, I think for the, for the kids to be able to get it in our elementary system would be beneficial. I, you know, short of, you can't tell them to do it, but I mean, if, if we could provide the funds, then for the equipment.
So what I would suggest to that, um, Don, is to reach out to Melissa Connor at, uh, Stafford and find out what their, what their needs are and what their, um, capacity is. Because one of the things that we're all being, at least as an initiative through Perkins Five and through the Agency of Education, uh, at the state level is to try to introduce, uh, students at a younger age. And it goes back to the point that you mentioned in terms of removing, uh, equipment and, uh, opportunities to do things such as, such as woodworking and, uh, home economics. In terms of looking at viable career pathways and helping students become educated at a younger age about what, uh, it takes to, uh, engage in certain professions and to think of themselves as career ready and college ready. And I think that one of the things that I've striven to do since I've been here is whenever somebody talks about college and career readiness, which is part of the S-BAC mantra, uh, I've said that we really need to, uh, emphasize career and college readiness. Because if you help people to become ready for careers, you will help them to be ready for college training. If that's what they choose to pursue. If you focus only on college training, there are some segments of our population that say, well, I really don't think I want to do that. And so you have to hook them by getting them interested in a particular career or career pathway. And that can be done through exploration. And young students can actually make, uh, great inroads and seize very good opportunities to explore, to play, to have fun and to do something practical. And that can be done best through, uh, collaboration through the career and technical programs that we have. And, uh, there's no uniform approach. Each center is pretty much its own entity. They have their RAB and they have, you know, their own guidelines and policies and procedures for following. But I would say that, uh, the, uh, Career and Technical Education's Director Group is one of the most, uh, collaborative groups that I've been part of in my educational career. And I find that they, uh, are very good at problem solving. And so if you, uh, asked them to think about ways that they could make a stronger connection between uh, Stafford Technical and Rutland Town School, they would be able to come up with some ideas for that. Not saying that that's what you should spend a whole of your money on, but, uh, that is one way that you can take, um, proactive steps in helping the youth of Rutland Town identify a, um, a, a career in which they could be passionate and which they could, uh, find interest and want to learn more. And that would certainly help, uh, with the promotion of, um, both career and technical education, but also the underpinnings of our economic um, drivers in the state and in terms of, uh, particularly, you know, employees that would be ready to step into positions that many, um, employers are hungering for. And, uh, many employers are at the point where they're actually offering, uh, subsidies for, uh, many employers are observing subsidies for their employees to continue their education. Because in this day and age, it doesn't end when you get a high school diploma. And I, I think that if we wanted to be uh, creative, that we would be looking for ways, regardless of whether we have the money or not, to, to partner and get the information out that there are wonderful careers that people can explore. And one of the things that I'm looking at through our Addison County Workforce Alliance right now is identifying those careers that are just beginning that people haven't really thought about, that will become, uh, very popular in five to 10 years. And we have to constantly, in career and technical education, be looking at how we're helping to fill that need through uh, workforce development, through, uh, training certificates and so forth. And so, uh, that, that's just uh, one way that we can build sustainability, uh, both at the local level and at the statewide level for, um, economic development and education, uh, as well as, uh, you know, workforce employment opportunities. So I see them all being linked together. And getting back to Mary's comment about the, um, about broadband, I, I think I read recently or saw a flyer somewhere that in, um, Rutland County, there's a fiber optic uh, service that is supposed to be, is that First Light that's doing that? I can't remember which entity.
Yeah, it's First Light.
Uh, and so to make sure that everybody in Rutland Town has access to that, oftentimes it doesn't take it to the last mile. And that's, that's really problematic. Uh, then you're, some people might not be as, uh, it, it may not be as accessible, uh, for people depending on where they reside and what their income level is. Uh, I know that there's been a whole lot of talk about making broadband accessible. Uh, but currently in certain parts of the town, the only, the only o- o- opportunity is really through, um, through Comcast. And Comcast offers a fairly decent service, but it's not necessarily, uh, easily affordable for everyone. And so, uh, figuring out what those opportunities are and how people could get access to that. And, uh, you know, a small subsidy might also be, uh, beneficial, particularly if it's going to bring broadband at a reasonable cost uh, into, um, our town. So just.
Dana, thank you for that. Let me ask one thing that's been, you know, kind of on my radar. And actually, we've got it on our project board here. And that's, um, transition planning. And then generally getting younger people interested in serving full-time or part-time or as volunteers in town government. Everything from, you know, police department to schools to listers to, how do we do that? Is that on anybody's radar screen?
Well, I, I, th- those particular professions may, uh, not be on folks' radar screen. At least at CTE, because there are no, uh, uh, outside of law enforcement, there are no programs that actually, that I'm aware of that actually target some of those jobs. However, one of the things that we have, um, started to explore is, uh, a variety of opportunities and looking at uh, co-op cooperative education, uh, experiences as being broader than just uh, funneling somebody to a particular, uh, industry or trade and making that broader. So once again, I would, I would reach out to, uh, Stafford and other, um, career centers to see what they can offer in terms of, uh, co-op education and or job shadows so that students could come and see what it's, uh, like. If they have a business program, for example, at Stafford, then you might want to, uh, ask their teacher to, uh, connect and find out uh, if students might be interested in, uh, public service i- in that capacity. Uh, if for the, for the, the, uh, CTE such as, we do not offer one, but in law enforcement or, uh, uh, what is it, emergency services, uh, they could certainly, uh, provide opportunities for students to shadow. And we can even do that over the summer. It's something that's not uh, very well known. But if a student is involved in a, uh, a CTE program and they want to do a job shadow or a job or a co-op, they can do that over the summer and be covered by the school's insurance, which is a real big, uh, plus because it helps employers uh, not have to, uh, uh, foot that, uh, that bill for liability because uh, that's what we are training students to be able to do. Uh, so they can be covered under our liability insurance. And so we have started, we've piloted for the first year, five students this year that we are putting out on co-ops over the summer. And the only, the only, um, string that's attached to that is the student must be returning to a career and technical program in the fall. And it doesn't say what program. So we could have, for example, somebody in our auto program go to uh, Virgin's and work with the, um, Collins Aerospace. Uh, and we might have somebody out of our machining plant do the same. Could come out of engineering. So when you're talking about, you know, various governmental, uh, opportunities, there are several programs, human. So when you're talking about, you know, various governmental opportunities, there are several programs, human services might even be interested in that as well. So it, it's finding the right match. And if you reach out to Stafford and Melissa Connor, she might be able to connect you with uh, programs at Stafford that you might not think of initially, that might be a good fit for students learning to, uh, looking to gain some experience. So. And that could be very rewarding.
We had, we had our road commissioner join us. I think he's waiting. This is our listening session on use of ARPA funds, which reminds me that we're always looking for contractors for snow plows, snow plowing in the winter. And out in the hallway was one of our assistant fire chiefs. And we're looking to recruit more firefighters. And I know we've had, you know, this is a statewide issue, trying to get enough volunteer firefighters into municipalities. So um, two more things. I mean, town government's going to be hurting if we can't fill these positions.
Well, one, I, I think, Mary, to your point, uh, creating a partnership where CTE centers can have a presence in even elementary and middle schools uh, to make them aware of the needs, the opportunities and the compatibility of various vocations with combining, you know, two part-time jobs or a, a volunteer job with a uh, an area of interest in another uh, vocation can be something that I think would be beneficial for public service because I, I think that we compartmentalize things too much when we go into education. And we should be decompartmentalizing that. Now, this is not a discussion for our purpose, but just a discussion about how we prepare young people for the future and providing them with greater opportunities to see what that would be like. Uh, and taking students on a, a field trip to the fire station and having volunteer firemen talk to them and then uh, see what they might be interested in doing. Cause sometimes those folks uh, join when, just like with uh, what is it, Civil Air Patrol and other areas where they start as young people and young volunteers and then uh, move up and begin to take on responsibility. And when they go off and start to earn a living, they, they remember their, those connections and can continue to support the, the work of the the town in that capacity.
We've had, we are having more people join us. Um, we've got members of the planning commission here. You might recognize the back of their heads. We're talking about, we've got a few more minutes to talk about possible use of the ARPA funds we're receiving. Um, any ideas from folks who have just joined us? We've had some really good ones today. Actually got some volunteers to do sit on a grants committee, grant low interest loan for businesses and individuals affected by ARPA or by the COVID crisis and using ARPA funds to help. So anybody with other ideas? Don?
I don't want to speak out of turn, but I thought Jim Hall was going to come and make a pitch for some COVID funds for the senior.
We talked a little bit about money for the, using the bus to get to a senior event, but you know, he's welcome to, and you know, this is not the end of the conversation. Let me say that. As I mentioned at the beginning, we have until December 31st of 2024 to appropriate ARPA funds. And then we have an additional two years to actually expend all of the funds. So Teresa Koolig, what do we use the money for?
That I have no idea.
But we've got time to think about it. So.
Dana, I wanted to, I wanted to compliment you. Your, your extensive educational background shines through very nicely.
Thank you, Don.
Okay. Well, if we don't have anything else, I think we're going to call the ARPA funding brainstorming session to a halt. Um, keep those ideas coming. We still have lots of time to use them and we've got some really creative things that I think the next step would be for us to compile a list based upon what we've heard individually and through these sessions. Get it to the select board and start piecing out the ones we may be interested in pursuing. And then taking the things off the list that we, we can't use ARPA funds for, but it's sounding like, as Don says, with a little creativity and liberal thought, and those were Don's words. I think we might be able to come up with some really good programs for the town. So thank you all. We're going to call the ARPA session to a close. We've got three minutes and before the regular select board meeting and I'm going to take a break. So thank you all.
Thank you.